I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha regular full board meeting on January 11th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call vote or attendance?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Colman.
Here. Barb Brzink is excused this evening due to an illness. And Sue, will you also please verify that the meeting's been properly posted with the media?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Tonight, we don't have any bright lights, but we do have a very important recognition. Chris Hedstrom, will you please introduce our Employee Recognition Award?
Good evening. This evening, it is my pleasure to offer the Employee Recognition Award for January 2017. It is being presented to Jamie Martenson. Jamie, would you join me, please? Jamie Martenson has played many roles in the School District of Waukesha, from bilingual teacher, bilingual Title I reading specialist, instructional resource teacher, bilingual ESL coordinator, and now as bilingual literacy effectiveness coach at Hire Elementary School. And as you can see, she brought her cheering section. Jamie's biggest contribution to our district in her current role is in developing, supporting, and coaching effective literacy practice in classrooms that serve all learners and including those who are serving learning, whose goal is to become bilingual and bilinguine. Jamie is not only highly skilled, but has the mindset that multilingual learners and linguistically talented students who bring all of their language to literacy endeavor. Unique to Jamie is that she truly understands the approach to literacy from the perspective of children who have tremendous linguistic resources at their brain's doorstep that, if facilitated, ensures engagement, empowerment, and achievement. Jamie is instrumental in preparing teachers in our fast-growing dual-language program. She directly creates units of study with several teachers across grade bands in the areas of English language development, comprehensive literacy, and effective bilinguine instruction in the content areas. Within all of these endeavors, Jamie teaches and coaches teachers to create learning experiences that prepare students for achievement and bilinguine, but also to engage in inquiry that is relevant to solving problems that are of a global nature. Jamie has taken on the development of the leadership capacity of others. She collaborates with dual-language teacher leaders at Hire to develop the instructional leadership capacity of that teacher leader so that our valued teachers do not leave the classroom to make us, to make a systematic impact. She has brought her strengths in facilitating teacher collaboration, focusing on database decision-making to empower local schools' decision-making. And along with her principal, Jamie is helping the teacher team to pave the path to increased and continued success in learning. Jamie works closely with new teachers to ensure they receive the feedback, resources, and support they need to be successful in their first year of teaching. She spends time to meet the needs of these teachers when they can make themselves available and is adaptable and flexible to when, where, and the topics they need to address. Lastly, Jamie is an advocate for multilingual learners, both students and teachers. She is committed to building a knowledgeable and culturally and linguistically responsive parent, staff, and student community. Her advocacy is woven through all that she does in supporting the entire system. Some have suggested that her work is above and beyond, that it is the work of several positions. Jamie would say that she cannot separate herself and her vision from the work she does in literacy. That is, being a bilingual literacy effectiveness coach cannot be compartmentalized. And just as with the learners, she brings all of her professional repertoire to each instructional leadership task. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Jamie Martenson on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
You stood anyway.
I'd just like to say I was very surprised and very honored. This is my 12th year in Waukesha, but I also was a student here in Waukesha. So, Waukesha is my home, and I love working here. Hire's been a great place to work at. I love, all the teachers are so motivated and makes my job a lot easier. So, I love all the people that I work with. I have so many opportunities to work with others in other schools and professional development opportunities. I've just grown so much because of the people around me, so thank you so much.
Thank you. We're gonna have to ask our biology teachers if we can clone Jamie. We, what? You play such an important role within our district. As you know, this is an expanding program, and you're looking at this at all levels. And we really do appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you. And we can see you're appreciated by many people. Moving on to our reports given by student representatives, tonight, we have our East High School being represented by William Yates and Gavin Tillis. Please come forward. Welcome. Oh, is there a third person or not? Okay, just two? Okay.
Yes. Hi, my name is William Yates.
I'm Gavin Tillis.
Thank you for inviting us to present here tonight. We really appreciate it. We will be sharing some of the achievements and highlights of the first semester. So, our school's philosophy is centered around the Circle of Courage. The Circle of Courage is a model of positive youth development based on principles of belonging, mastery, independence, and generosity. We began the school year with a focus on belonging during the first few weeks of the school. All students participated in creating social contracts, which are now posted in all the classrooms. Students worked with their peers to determine how they wanted to be treated by teachers, each other, and how they wanted to handle conflict that may arise. Social contracts may also, social contracts also allow us, the students, to be in control of management of the classroom by holding each other accountable and working positively through conflict. To further establish a sense of belonging at East, teachers nominate students each month for Student of the Month. There's a glass display cabinet near the main office in which houses certificates recognizing the students for each month. Also, students and staff's birthdays are acknowledged each month. Students receive a birthday card and small gift from our principal, Ms. Chambers, and the staff. Staff has a monthly potluck birthday lunch on with a special birthday treat and also receive birthday cards signed by the entire staff. Beginning the year with a focus on belonging allows the staff and students to build a relationship and develop a positive school culture.
Gavin. On October 13th, on East hosted our first WTTC event that had a school representative from WCDC named Jose, who gave a presentation on how WCDC works and how much it was cost and teaches us how, like, our after-school, after-high-school life, how life would be on high school. Event was great success, and we look forward to having it in the future. Selective seniors continue to volunteer in the Money Coach Program, which is sponsored, Make a Difference, sponsored by Make a Difference. This program meets once a month during class time, and students meet one-on-one with their coaches to set savings goals, learn the budget, and plan for their financial futures. Students that successfully complete the program can earn up to $350 in scholarship money as a deposit to a savings account for them. And in a simulation called On Your Coast to Coast, the simulation puts students in a virtual real-world situation where they're given an income and put in a place to live. This must survive 52 weeks, paying their bills, finding transportation and housing, buying insurance, handling unexpected situations, investing, maintaining financial statements. Students are also working on building professional portfolios that include a cover letter, a resume, references, thank-you letter, leaving a job letter, and a letter of recommendation.
In the holiday season, as a school community, we focus on the Circle of Courage principle of generosity. ED Option 2 students organized a coin collection for Christmas clearing council. All the programs at East raised $120, providing gifts for one child. East, in collaboration with Waukesha Transition Academy, put on a toy drive, and all donations were given to Waukesha's Women's Center Community Shelf.
Credit program has an energetic and highly motivated group of students this year. The students are focused on completing their classes and maintaining excellent daily progress as they near the first, near the end of first semester. During the first semester, 14 students from the graduating class of 2015 through 2017 have completed academic requirements and qualified for their diplomas from Waukesha North, South, and West. East was selected also for award of $5,000 Initiative Scholarship due to Herb Cole Educational Foundation. The intent of the Initiative Scholarship is to recognize students who are putting forth extraordinary effort in the classroom, but are, make, but their high class rank is highly, makes them ineligible for their academic scholarship. East teachers nominated 12 seniors for consideration after interview process with our principal, Ms. Chambers. Raven Kindred is the recipient of the Initiative Scholarship. She was awarded $5,000 in the spring of 2017. She plans to attend UW-Waukesha in the fall and transfer to UW-Milwaukee. Fall, and then go into UW-Milwaukee in the spring to earn her bachelor's.
The teachers at Waukesha East, they're just so nice. They're super delightful. Everybody there is just so loving. I think this is the first time we've ever been up here, so I hope this is a change for the best.
This concludes our report. I'm Gavin Tillis. I go to East in the PM, and I go to South in the AM.
If you could just stay up at the podium for just a little bit longer, gentlemen? We may have some questions from our board members. Mr. O'Brien?
I suppose I should let Mr. Baumgart go first, but...
I'll go right ahead.
He'd be first. I'm sure Mr. Baumgart was gonna say that you may or may not know that Harvey Phillips was our very first charter school in the school district. And it was one that we were always very proud of and always have been very proud of. It's not called Harvey Phillips anymore. It's called East, but the program itself at one time was called Harvey Phillips. And even through all the budget cuts, when, you know, people would say, "We don't have a constituency that would support this school," we've always maintained that we had to fund this school because it's important for the students that attend there, and I think it's very important for our community. And I'm so glad that you, you and the staff at East elected to come present before the board tonight. Yes, it is a first, and it'd be nice to see it again sometime soon.
Thank you.
Mr. Baumgart.
Some of the same, but I just wanted to say, I told you guys earlier that I was excited about you being here, and I think it's important that the public know that we've invited you here and you have come, and it's not gonna be the only time you're here. You've pretty well proved that. And I'm thrilled with it. We've talked about this for probably about a year. We got a couple more schools besides the South-North-West contingent, and it's important that we're here for all of the students and we'll find out the interesting things that are going on. And I'm so glad you came, and I think you feel okay about it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Good. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Dietz.
I just want to thank both William and Gavin for representing East High School. As a newborn member, I've been touring schools, and I stopped at your school probably two or three times this summer, and I was extremely impressed with the extra effort I saw students putting forth, the commitment, the dedication. It was truly inspiring to me to witness what was happening there as far as learning and, you know, just that commitment to really achieve and despite, you know, any obstacles that have been in your way. So, congratulations. I'm really proud of you, as are all the rest of us as well. And I know personally that you have some really dedicated teachers at your school that also deserve a lot of credit for the success of your program as well as your success, and you've acknowledged them. I just wanna do a shout-out for them as well because I think they're doing a great job in keeping you on track and keeping you focused, and you're all going to achieve the goals that you've set out, and I really do think you're doing great things, so...
They're really helpful.
So, keep coming back and keep, you know, keep us posted on where things are going.
All right, thank you.
Nice job tonight. I'm really proud of you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, great job, gentlemen. We'll see you in the future. We do have a second school that will also be giving a report tonight, and that is the E-Achieve Academy, Mustafa Hassan. You don't...
So?
You've changed.
He changes it.
I don't need to...
You've already introduced Mustafa.
He's on the screen.
You can see Mustafa up there.
He's remote.
On the big screen and also here.
On purpose.
That's how we teach.
Mustafa is a, this is his fifth year at E-Achieve. He's a senior this year, and I'll let him take it away from here. Go ahead, Mustafa.
Okay, hi. Good evening, everyone. I'm blessed to be here today representing E-Achieve Academy, which, as a virtual school, offers many unique opportunities to its students. The flexibility offered by a virtual environment provides the opportunity for students to have some control over their pace, spending additional time on difficult concepts, or moving ahead, or taking advantage of advanced course. The virtual setting has also made it for E-Achieve students to take classes at other high schools or at the college level. I personally have been able to take several classes at UWM, which I most likely would not have been able to take if I was in a regular school environment, just due to transportation and time issues. This is the same reason why we have so many part-time students here at E-Achieve who find it easier to take one or two classes here at E-Achieve rather than with other schools. We've also had some recent highlights outside the classroom, including at the National Math Con Competition, which E-Achieve has participated in past two years and will again this year. Both years so far, we have had E-Achieve students score in the top 10 in their respective grade levels at the Chicago Finals. And last year, we even had an E-Achieve sixth grader who was a national champion, placing first place in the sixth grade level. Aside from academics, we have also had some social highlights. Since I joined E-Achieve, and before that as well, we've had an annual trip to Devil's Lake, several ski outings throughout the year, and also other family outings. Other E-Achieve family outings are planned by the Student Council, which is another highlight here at E-Achieve, and of which I am a co-president. Student Council is responsible for promoting school spirit ideas, planning outings throughout the year, managing a monthly newsletter, as well as creating the school yearbook. We meet virtually once every two weeks through a Zoom meeting like this one to discuss and work on these projects and delegate responsibilities amongst ourselves as appropriate. Some of our best Student Council highlights from last year were making E-Achieve students aware that we had a mascot, which is the Phoenix, which not even we knew, actually, as well as having a contest to determine a mascot design. We also planned a very successful outing to Cave of the Mountains, which was attended by more than 100 individuals. This year, we already had a successful family farm outing, have arranged a bowling outing later this month after finals, and are planning on having a laser tag and arcade outing later this winter, as well as other possible trips in the spring. Based on Student Council ideas, the school is currently also working on adding mascot spirit wear to the school store, which will hopefully be an enjoyable addition for E-Achieve families. All in all, E-Achieve continues to motivate its students, flexibly offer numerous opportunities for us to grow and learn, and overall is a very wonderful school to be part of. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Baumgart.
I don't know if he, do you have to, is he, can he see us?
Go ahead. I can turn this, so you can see me.
Well, it's all right. As long as he can hear us. He doesn't have to sit and look.
Can he hear us?
If he can't hear you, I'll repeat the question.
Okay, the question's quite simply, where are you?
Where are you located, Mustafa?
I am at home right now.
I think the question is, which city do you live in?
Oh, which city? Oh, yeah. I live in Greenfield.
I guess I got another question that I'll ask you.
Okay, sure.
Why did he, I'd like to know, or we'd like to know, I hope, why he got involved with E-Achieve?
Okay. Why did you get involved in E-Achieve in the first place?
I actually got involved in E-Achieve for academic reasons. I've been advanced in math. I like math. It's my favorite subject for a long time, and the school that I was in wasn't really as flexible as I wanted. So, I came here to E-Achieve, and I found that they were much more flexible. And now I'm taking, like I said, math courses at UWM, and so I've been able to advance much more quickly than I would have been able to.
Rick, thank him for that. I really appreciate his reply.
Thank you, Mustafa.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Real quick, when, are you, are you, you are planning to graduate from E-Achieve, I take it. Is that the plan?
Are you planning on graduating from E-Achieve?
Yes, this is my senior year. I'm looking forward to it.
He's well on his way.
So, we'll see you at the graduation ceremony that we usually have at South?
Well, are you planning on being at the South graduation ceremony?
Yeah, hopefully, yeah.
Okay, see you there.
Another question, Rick. What challenges are there in this form of learning? Or does he think there aren't any challenges? It's pretty natural.
What challenges would you say are inherent in this form of learning, Mustafa?
The biggest thing is staying on top of things. There is a little bit more flexibility. That is a very big benefit, but it's also responsibility. So, one of the biggest challenges is staying on pace and not procrastinating. Other than that, most other things are easier in a virtual environment, for me at least, than in a physical environment.
Perhaps this format is preparing you for college because really, it's really up to you to take care of your schedule and to be well-organized, so you might want to pass that comment on, see if he wants to come anymore on that, Rick.
Would you say this format is preparing you well for college?
Yes, I do think so. It's been, like I said, it's much easier to progress academically. I have more times for extracurricular activities, and taking, I've been taking classes at college because of the flexibility of schedule that I've had at E-Achieve, and so I've kinda gotten a small taste of that. Not a full picture, of course, but it's, yeah, I do believe that it's giving me a good preparation for college.
Ms. Reinacek.
Just one last thing. What does he want to do when he graduates college? Like, what is he thinking in the future?
What, do you have plans for after college? What field are you hoping to go into?
I'm hoping to go into biomedical engineering. I don't, I'm not entirely sure what exactly beyond that. I do know that that's a subject that I'm interested in. Don't really know where I'm going from there.
Okay, sorry, one more.
Go ahead.
Can he do UW online, or is he actually going to go into a physical college?
Okay. The question, the question is, are you doing UW classes online, or do you physically go to the college?
No, I physically go there. The classes there are physical. But it's easy to manage transportation, one, because my dad works there, and two, because I don't have to go to another school. E-Achieve is all online, so I can just work on E-Achieve at the library there. It's not a burden.
Mr. Dietz.
Any particular reason why he chose E-Achieve over the competition?
Any particular reason you chose E-Achieve as opposed to the other virtual school options that are out there?
This was mostly by coincidence, really. As we were thinking about switching to a different school, possibly, this was back in middle school, we just happened to see an ad for E-Achieve on TV, which is what got us started into thinking about online learning to begin with. And so, we applied to several, and we ended up going with E-Achieve. We found that it was very flexible, and it just looked like a good option.
Any other questions? All right, please thank Mustafa for his report, and we hope to have him back again sometime this year. That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. Bill, whose idea was this to have both of these tonight? That was a great idea.
Kurt and I both came up with it sometime last year.
Nice.
I've been pestering him about, this guy over here on my left.
Yeah. It was good to hear from both those schools. That was excellent. Great idea.
You just gotta keep working on it.
He does it in a nice way, though.
I didn't, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our section of the meeting where we listen to our citizens address us directly. As has been past practice, we provide up to three minutes for an individual to speak. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Mr. O'Brien will give you a signal, letting you know that there's 30 seconds remaining, so if you could start to wrap up your comments at that time, that would be appreciated. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from attending or speaking at future board meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering applause, or other behavior that will attract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and participants, at this time, please silence your phones. And we do have two speakers who have signed up, Kimberly Coronado and on deck will be Paul Reese. Kimberly?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am a graduate of Waukesha School District and a very proud parent of four children who currently attend Waukesha School District. For the past six years, we have endured three children in the special education system. We have experienced far too many exhausting, stressful, and sleep-deprived nights, anxiety-provoking IEPs. We continue to endure years of daily phone calls to pick up our children because the school districts, the schools, are not trained to deal with our children's challenging behaviors. I am so very thankful for a few schools in Waukesha District that excel in special education. In some schools, it is absolutely deplorable, lacking simple communication, accountability for meeting IEP goals, poor data collection, and progress reporting, lack of training and understanding that all behaviors are a form of communication. Sadly, many educators and administrative personnel still treat special-needs children as though they are naughty instead of a child with a brain-based medical issue. We, as special education parents, are demanding for better. Every child, a graduate. No child left behind. I ask that you hear my desperate plea for an immediate solution. Help is available, yet out of reach because of requests for meanings to be, to bring details to this help have been denied. I am here because my children have been left behind, and I want to voice the facts to people who have been made, who have made decisions. This is a marvelous opportunity in front of us to change the bleak trajectory of children with autism in the school district of Waukesha. Here are the facts. January 1st of 2016, Applied Behavior Analysis became a newly offered service at no cost to the school district. It is paid through Medicaid as a related service to children who have significant behavior challenges, skill deficits, poor social skills, emotional, poor emotional regulation skills, poor attention spans to stay on task. This is a game changer for our schools. This is different from school-based mental health. It is not a person in a corner office. The service is provided in the moment in real-life situations. The service is provided in the moment, in real-life situations, on the playground, and in the hallway, and in the classrooms. ABA therapists are qualified staff with master degrees, CBC, ABA, board-certified behavior analysis, supported by PhD-level supervisors. They are drug-screened.
30 seconds.
Basically, I read in the newspaper, there's a million-dollar thing going out to revamp the school district, Waukesha South Cafeteria. We need special education help through allowing ABA therapy allowed in school. And I hope to have a meeting. I've tried to communicate and tried to, has been denied.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Reese?
It is a good thing. Very good thing. I want to talk a little bit, last month, Todd mentioned something when talking about skilled trade, he used the term "soft skills," which, I'm a machinist, admire where it's work ethic. And these are taught by, in how that relates with, in the schools. And it's something that I was concerned when my daughter went to STEM. And I like a lot of the things that go to STEM. I'm not here just to beat up on things, and that's not my intent. But there's hidden lessons that were always taught. And those are showing up on time, prepared, and ready to do your work. And there was, it was a stinkler with a lot of the shop teachers, that you were on time. And if you weren't on time, you weren't going to be here. I mean, you can't show up on a job site without your tool belt. You're useless. You're, you're just, you're useless. And you've got to be on time to places. You know, who has Woody Allen, who said 80% of life is showing up? You know, you have to show up. You have to be there on time. I had a deal with my, my boss today. We talked and I, I got upset about this issue. We talked about people not changing the towel rack and doing the simple things. If you don't care about little things, how are you going to care about big things? I found a bunch of parts that were scrapped today. It's about $20,000. And they're just furious, guys who can sit on a, close the door, hit cycle start, and lean up against the machine and look at their cellphone. I mean, how is that working? How, how is that working? You know, you don't have time to look at the part. It was a physical, just look at the part. And they didn't do it. And it made it through three operations before it got to me. And I'm like, what's going on? And it's just that work ethic. It's just being gone, you know? It's not there anymore. It's, it's, I'm here to show up and get paid, and that's about it. And anything extra isn't my concern. And it starts in school. It starts in showing up in class. It starts being prepared for your lesson. And it was those things that I didn't understand as a kid, why some of these teachers are really jerks, you know? Because you got into the real world and you found out, you have to be on time. You have to be there and prepared to work. The next person's relying on you to do your job. And these were just some of the hidden lessons that were taught at one time, I thought, more so maybe than what I was seeing. But I'm sure there's still good teachers out there who are sticklers.
30 seconds.
And anyways, that's all I have for that. Oh, one thing is I do miss in, at STEM is, is the art class. I miss my daughter's drawings. And so I wanted to throw something in there because, you know, I always complain about things, and I just want to see how much I miss that. That was really a great pleasure. And I, hindsight, I miss that. Thank you.
We've only have these two people signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the committee or the board at this time? Okay. This is, this is just a time for us to listen. We don't respond to, to the comments, just so you know. We're moving on to our minute approval. At this time, we do have two sets of minutes that we're, we're looking at. Regular board meeting minutes on December 14th, 2016. And also on December 14th, 2016, we had an executive session. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
To approve both?
Is there a second? Given by Mr. Baumgart. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report given by Superintendent Greg.
On this evening. Unreceived.
Wow. Wow. And we do not have a Waukesha Education Foundation report tonight either. So we'll move on to our safety committee report, given by Amanda Roddy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The safety committee met this morning at the facility, service building, excuse me. The first item reviewed was a student and employee accident report. Next, a report was given regarding the taking care of the grounds. So the facilities crews were out last night and out this morning, salting and making sure that things were as safe as possible. They're watching the forecasts and planning accordingly. Next item mentioned was the monthly safety drills that are required by each of the schools. Last year, the schools were 100% compliant and are on course to continue that. Reminders are sent to the principals to ensure that they're not only doing those tests, but also recording them, so that there's proof of that. And then lastly, the next meeting will be at the service building again, held Wednesday, February 7th, 8th, excuse me, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Roddy.
Thank you.
Moving on to our charter, school, and program report, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, I have just a couple items on the list here. First, from Inspire. With Inspire's objective to get their students exposed more to career opportunities and understanding that part of their future, Inspire will be hosting an event called Project Genesis later this month, at which a number of businesses and other organizations will be, have been invited to participate in looking forward at partnering possibilities in the future as we try and have our kids linked up with some careers. I was going to report briefly on Avid, just to simply say, we had an excellent report at our TNL meeting last, two weeks, last week. And who's handling the report tonight?
Mr. McCaffrey will be.
Handling. When we get to Avid, I'll add some more stuff in. My own views. Always. Thanks for letting me know. And I won't do it now. Take your thunder. And lastly, on December 22nd, our STEM schools had their great, great challenge, on catapults, but it's kind of a mouthful. Each of the kids had the opportunity, as an out-of-school project, to build a catapult. And I went over to see some of them, and they were some excellent examples. And they demonstrated the real effort put on by the kids and something that was kind of exciting and interesting to them and their families. There's no question. It's, it's an opportunity for them to work with their parents and putting this together. It was not a school-time project, but what, when they showed them off, it was quite a day.
Did you have your helmet on?
Yeah, no. But one of them I saw at the middle school went 96 feet.
Wow.
That's a bit of a toss. Yeah, it was the last, first and last thing that particular machine was able to do, though. But it was a great, great experience for the kids, and they loved it. That's all my, all my report.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. It's that time of the year, once a year, we have to actually approve the space available for our open enrollment process. Mr. Cook, will you lead us into this, please?
Thank you. In front of you is the proposal for the open enrollment seats. Per state statute, in January, the Board of Ed has to act to declare the number of seats available to students who wish to open enroll. The first side of the document, which would be the second page of the packet, indicates the schools that are going to be closed in our district, any seats going in, and that would be Whittier and Butler, and that's due to attendance area enrollment. Below, there's a chart consistent with board policy, 5113.1, and the guideline associated with it. We worked with the enrollment office to do seat projections, and what you have in front of you are those number of seats that are allocated. We do have a number of grades that are closed based off of what is our projected enrollment for next year and the current number of available FTE at those grade levels. On the second page of the document are the number of seats available in special education. We have closed special education seats to open enrollment. We did so by looking at how many we recommend per caseload, the number of FTE that we have, the number of students that we're projecting to be with us next year, and that's how we base those seats.
Questions or comments on this, Mr. Baumgart?
This is an action.
It is an action, yes.
Why don't I start by moving for approval of the open enrollment space availability report?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Given by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
Maybe, I'm a little confused here, but maybe even Mr. Baumgart can help me with the history. Enrollment's an H&R function, isn't it? HR committee function? I mean, this report really should go to HR for, and then come out of HR, shouldn't it?
It's always been handled by Student Services, the enrollments.
Well, it's a new, enrollments have always gone through HR from what I, I thought that was one of the...
Staffing, for staffing they have, but probably the last, since I've been here, we've, we've done open enrollment through Student Services.
Well, I mean, we do, I mean, the whole, if we redistricted, it'd go through HR. It's, it's one of the rare things in the past, as I recall, went through HR.
I don't, I'm not trying to be, I'm disagreeing with you, quite simply, because I remember way back when, when Jim Hazlewood was still here, that enrollment was his, part of his ballgame.
Correct, but it went through HR.
No, Jim was Student Services.
It still went through HR. Even though he was, it was his ballgame, it's still, enrollment was always handled by HR. And it can be handled however we want, but I'm just, I just remember that was a stat. Ms. Heston?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that Student Services doesn't do this in isolation. HR does work very closely with enrollment and Student Services every year on the staffing and the number of sections that we have at each level. So I don't, I don't understand why it would go through HR. I think it, it makes sense to keep it in Student Services. But to your point, Kurt, I think that HR is involved from that staffing perspective, and we determine the number of sections based on our current population of students, and then we work to open seats so that we're not adding teachers simply because of open enrollment.
Yeah, and I guess my point is, is that from a board structure point of view, it should go through a committee for review before it comes to re-board for approval. I mean, that's generally, everything we do is that way. There's a committee that handles items, and that committee blesses it, and then it doesn't get dealt with by the full board and talk to the committee, does their work.
There are some items that do come before the full board that don't go through committee. And this has just been traditionally one of those. But I guess we can review that for, for next year and...
It's just, to me, it should, there's very few things that come here without action items, without going through committee first.
Any other discussion? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
No.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven one. We can talk on that further for next year, Mr. O'Brien, so. All right, moving on to, we do have one other full board action item still this evening before we get into some of our committee reports later on. And we're looking at the non-discrimination self-assessment report. Joe, will you please bring us up to speed on that?
Yeah, every five years, the school district, school districts around Wisconsin are required to do a self-evaluation of their practices around certain areas identified by the state. In the last two cycles, the three bulleted points on there, the methods, practices, curriculum, and materials used in counseling, the participation trends and patterns, and district support of athletic, extracurricular, and recreational activities, and trends and patterns in awarding scholarships or other forms of recognition. The district contracted with Fred Skiba, who is through Northwoods Consulting Group. He comes in and conducts the self-evaluation. It works well on two fronts. One, we have an objective person coming in and taking a look at our practices. The other is he's experienced, he does about 100 school districts a year. So he's very, very well-versed in what is the format and what the DPI requires to submit the report. Every five years, we must bring this to you. The last time we did it was in 2011. It is a comprehensive report. If you look through it, you will see there are about 40 staff members in the district that were interviewed as part of this report. He evaluated all of our data and provided us a report several weeks back.
All right, this is also an action item. I'd be looking for a motion to get at least the discussion started here. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'm moved for approval.
Mr. Baumgart, is there a second?
Second.
Given by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Hey, I had, just on, if you turn to page 80.
Sure.
I, I think the totals are off. I think North's total is correct. It should just be the total of the male and female. West, West's total looks off. I think South is good. Am I missing something there? Is that just a typo or...
As far as the summary of scholarship goes, that were awarded in 2015 and 16?
Yeah.
These were the scholarships that were presented to Fred through the counseling departments. These are district-awarded scholarships. These do not come from the Educational Foundation or outside scholarships. These are the ones that the district makes the decision on awarding.
Right. Is the total for West correct?
No, it's a total...
I think it's a mistake.
Oh, my apologies, my, so the total number, I apologize.
Yeah.
No, that would be 15 plus 24, so 39.
Yeah, so that's just a minor correction, so.
It's a total for the whole district, I think.
The 154, yeah, but I think it's in the wrong column. We might need to just drop it below. So just correct that.
It will be done.
Mr. O'Brien?
I guess I would say if it has the word enrollment on it, then we probably should find a committee for it. Going forward, going forward.
Did it have the next, or the last conversation?
The last conversation.
Gotcha.
We'll be cross-checking this now.
Message, message received. And understood. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on approving the non-discrimination self-evaluation report, please.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Joe, for those presentations. Moving on, we're looking at our consent agenda. Mr. Cook, did we have any gifts that we need to report on?
Four gifts tonight. Linda and Gregory Burns donated $1,000 to Butler Middle School for holiday food box donated to Butler families in need, as determined by the school social worker. The Waukesha Elks Lodge donated $500 to the Waukesha School District for supplies for students in need and basic needs for families of students who are homeless. And Whittier Elementary, Elementary School received two gifts from River Glen Church, $102 to purchase books for reading, book project, and $500 to help with the admission and bus expenses for the second and third grade student trips to the Milwaukee Public Museum.
Thank you to those people for those donations. Those are always wonderful, wonderful gifts. Thank you. We, your agenda does include a variety of categories for approval. There were no expulsions this last month. If any board member wishes to set anything aside for separate consideration, please so indicate at this time. Okay, seeing none, Pat Madden, will you please present the consent agenda for approval?
Yes, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of four retirements, three resignations, and four new contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desks. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Dietz, discussion? I just wanted to make a quick comment on the people who are putting in their resignations and their retirements, actually. First of all, congratulations to all of them making the decision, and thank you for their dedicated work. There's, there's two people in particular that I'd like to, to thank. Sarah Barron, who has been with us in a variety of capacities, as principal at elementary level, at middle school level, and she's taken on a variety of leadership roles here at our central office, and she's taken on some doozy of programs and, and tasks over the years, just really tough things. She's never been afraid to just kind of jump in and, and get in the mix and really try and solve problems, so Sarah will be missed. You'll have a tough time, Chris, filling those shoes, I know, moving forward, so thank you, Sarah, for, for all your hard work. And boy, holy cow, Bonnie Schlice. You know, I personally can attest to the fantastic leadership that Bonnie delivers. My kids both went to Randall back when it was a traditional elementary school, and I'll tell you, what a true leader. Loves the kids, has fantastic ideas, allows people to get involved, parents, teachers. She is a shared leadership kind of person. She really just, she runs a great ship, and, you know, the parents who have had, have had her as a principal know exactly what I'm, what I'm talking about, and, and Bonnie will be missed, and I, I want to thank her just personally for, you know, what she's done for my children, but there's thousands, probably tens of thousands of students that she's impacted over the years, so, boy, good luck filling those shoes too, Chris. Those will be big ones, so, but thank you, Bonnie, for all of your, your years of service. Mrs. Reinacek?
And so how many? Is, is this year 51?
I think it is. She will wrap up 51, I think, this year.
It's in the 50s. I'm not sure if it's 50 or 51, but...
I thought last year we gave her a gift.
Last year was 50, I think, and so I think this year will be 51. Yeah, wow. And you know what? Her energy level is, it's beyond mine. She, she is, she is always on the go, so. Mr. O'Brien?
I, you know, I just want to share a quick story about Bonnie, and, and, you know, Dave Bauer was on the school board here, and he moved his, his children from private school into the public school because the private school closed, and, and the school he ended up when it was Hillcrest with Bonnie. And, and he said, you know, his first experience with our public school district for his children was with Bonnie, and there wasn't enough good, there wasn't, he couldn't, there was, there was no way to put in words on how happy he was of what she did to welcome his children into that school and the type of performance that she exhibited, as she was also making a transition at that time from Randall to Hillcrest. And she's just been such a committed public servant, beside, you know, and all our educators are public servants, as a matter of fact, but, and most of them are committed, but she, she certainly has given it her all her entire lifetime. It's been a lifetime career, and I hope she's enjoying retirement, but she is just, it's hard to argue with, with how much she's contributed to our school district.
Argument there, Kurt. We'll leave the arguments for other stuff.
Yes, yes. Any other comments? Okay, let's take the vote on the consent agenda. Sue?
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Thank you, Pat. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Gray.
Thank you. I had an opportunity today to be a judge for future city competition at STEM, and this year both Flight and Quest were invited, and, and they had multiple teams at different levels for, for those schools as well, so there was a lot of activity going on at, at STEM today. Our, our, our efforts to get more girls involved in engineering must be paying off, because I have to say that two of the girls' teams kind of, kind of dramatically outscored most of the boys' teams, so it was, they did a wonderful job presenting, and they had, had a wonderful model, so some of that work is, is obviously paying off. Next week, the Wasby State Convention, Education Convention begins Wednesday through Friday. If you have not registered and you're interested in, in attending, Sue can still probably get you in. Actually, you could probably register there if you need to, if for some reason you wake up Wednesday morning and think, boy, I'd like to go to this, you can, you can register at the, so, but I just, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Okay. We are going to be featured, one of the thing, what we're going to be featured number, one of them is, the, the state Focus on Energy Department is, is including us in a presentation on Thursday based on the success we've had with our, some of our lighting and energy projects, so that'll be interesting. I, I should, I expect to be able to attend that so I can bring back some additional information, and I know some other people are going to be down there as well.
Do you know the date? Do you know which day that's on?
It's Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday at 1:45 PM.
Okay, 1:45.
There is, there is information online. If you go to the Wasby web, website, you can actually download the PowerPoint they're using, and it'll, it'll give, there's three or four other school districts that they're highlighting, but we'll, we'll be in there as well. Monday, January 16th, we have the new teacher reception at North High School. That starts at 4:00 PM, and everyone is welcome, and it's a great opportunity to come and, and talk to our new teachers and get a chance to, to hear what they have to say about coming to work at, at Waukesha. And then finally, on January 23rd, we have the Waukesha One Conference that will be at West, and board members are always very welcome to visit or participate in any of the sectionals, if there's anything that, that interests you, and I believe the start time is eight, and that goes till four, but obviously, if you can only come for a very short period to be involved in some things, please do that. We have, we have a lot of events going on throughout the day, and, and I think, Jody, someone will have a schedule of those events, so if a board member wanted to come for a specific, we can get that information out as well, so. And the final bit of, of good news here, over the holiday break, I, I did some work with our OPEB attorneys. We had some final paperwork. I am told with the signing of that paperwork, we will be sent the canceled moral obligation notes, which we can do whatever we want with, including having a, having a, having a small cookout with them or something, but that, that is it. That's the end of the paperwork, and so we're in good place there. I know Ryan, or Darren has received the final payment on that, and so that will be discussed later. There's more, I think Mr. O'Brien has some more information on that later this evening. So, all good news, and that's my report.
Well, the, yes, Mr. O'Brien. Oh, I thought you raised your hand. At the Wasby Convention, you, you will be addressing, you'll be opening the general session.
Yeah, apparently, I, I got the word today that I will be master of ceremonies for the general session on Wednesday. I thought maybe all I'd have to do is, is introduce a few speakers, and I got my script, and it's like this thick, so we'll see if my voice holds up for that one.
Yeah, well, so Todd is the president of WASDA, and Chris is the president of WASPA, and that just, you know, we have really excellent leaders here in Waukesha, and I just wanted, I know you guys don't toot your horns, so I got to toot your horn for you every once in a while, and we're very proud of both of you being leaders at the state level.
Thank you.
Representing us well and, and helping the other districts out moving forward in educating the students throughout the state of Wisconsin, so thank you for your leadership. Appreciate that, that very much.
Thank you.
And one, one other quick thing, if, if you can get to the next Monday's new hire gathering, what I really like about the second gather, or gathering halfway through the year is, you know, when the new hires are coming on, they really have no perspective. They're, they're, you know, above their, there's, there's stuff that they have to do in August to get ready, just to teach the kids and stuff, so, you know, they don't talk to us much, but now they have a perspective, they've gotten a semester under their belt, and it's really actually a fantastic time to talk to the new hires at that time, because they, things have settled down and they have a perspective, and so I'd highly encourage you, if you have the time, to be there. It's, it's, it's very good, so. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it. Moving on to our committee reports, we'll begin with our technology committee given by Patrick McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening, however, our next scheduled technology committee meeting will be January 18th, which is next Wednesday, at six o'clock.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to finance and facilities, given by Chairman O'Brien.
Thank you. Before I start my report, I, I'm looking forward to the Wasby Convention. I'm trying to organize a sit-in at the General Assembly. A little bit of short notice, Mr. Gray, I'll, I'll try to put it together for you.
You'll be told to sit down at some point by me, so that's okay. All right.
Okay, let's get on to the FNF report. We didn't have any action items at FNF. We did have a number of information items. As always, we have our monthly budget report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of December. $18,291,450 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $8,820,513 was expended during the month. $940,860 was reported in the special education fund revenue, and $2,344,779 was expended. There was a large increase in revenue for December due to the OPEB settlement, money totaling $5,565,000, and the district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. The second information item was the South High School cafeteria project, which made the paper. The committee reviewed the request for proposal for the South High School cafeteria project. Eight contractors were sent this document and asked to provide a response to the RFP in January. If this work is to be completed this summer, it is necessary for the project to be approved by the board in February. The results of the RFP will be brought back in February for your consideration. The third item was the 2017-18 budget development. The committee reviewed the preliminary budget assumptions for the 2017-18 budget development. These assumptions will change as the state of Wisconsin deliberates on the next biennial budget. The committee was also presented with the 2017-18 budget development calendar, which will be used as a guide to develop next year's budget. Last, but not least, was the Fund 38 loan repayment. The committee reviewed the administration's recommendation to pay off the remaining Fund 38 loan balance on February 15th due to the district receiving the final settlement related to the OPEB legal action, legal action. In February, a budget amendment will be brought forward that will allow for the prepayment of the loan, receipt of the settlement, and other major and minor adjustments that may be needed to reflect the positive outcome of this payoff. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I just wanted to make a brief comment, and maybe Darren, you could help explain this a little bit more in detail. The, the second item dealing with the high school cafeteria project, there are monies, those, those monies that we're using to fund that project need to be used for, for our food program. Can you kind of explain how that works, how, how those extra monies get kicked back, and then we have to use those for that particular program?
Sure. Because of the federal program that we participate in, there's regulations and requirements to designate those funds and the revenues that are generated from our food service program, and, and over time, we've developed up a, a fund balance that can only be used for improvements in kitchen cafeteria areas. You can't add square footage to a building or use the funds for instructional purposes or anything of that sort, so over the last, I think we started talking about this about a year ago, about using some of those fund balance dollars to renovate the South High School cafeteria, which hasn't been touched since the 1950s in the original construction, and then other, other minor improvements in comparison, but we really don't have much flexibility in terms of what those dollars can be allocated for.
Yeah, I appreciate that. There are lots of rules and regulations that we have to live by, that a lot of our constituents aren't necessarily aware of, and I, this was just brought up in earlier comments, so I wanted to make sure that, you know, we had a little bit better understanding of, of, of that funding. Mr. O'Brien?
And just to make sure we're clear on that, that fund balance built up over years, there's required obligations relative to how much you charge per meal and is part of that buildup. For years, we made the, what I would say, the mistake of, of trying to cut our prices to get better participation instead of offering higher quality, so the last couple of years, we've changed that mindset to say, hey, that's, the quality is the issue, and, and so we're not looking to cut prices anymore. I think we're seeing a turnaround there, and upgrading the facilities will be part of that turnaround, and that's why that money exists, is for maintaining the quality of the facility. You have both your, you know, your variable costs, which is your meals, but you also have your fixed costs, which is your facilities, and we have not put any money into our fixed cost at South High School for over 50 years, and we're not going to referendum to do that. We have the money to do that, so that's a good thing.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for that further explanation there. Moving on to our next committee meeting, or committee report, teaching and learning, usually given by Mrs. Brusink, but she's ill, so, Mr. McCaffrey, you are the fill-in.
Thank you.
The chosen one.
The chosen, there you go. I feel good about myself. The teaching and learning committee met on January 3rd, 2017. We have one action item, three informational items, and one discussion item that appeared on the agenda. The action item was for the approval of food science course for science equivalency. The food science course taught in the Family Consumer Science Department provides a great deal of chemistry content. State standards from both the Family Consumer Science and Science Departments were used to complete a crosswalk identifying that chemistry standards are met within the food science curriculum. Both DPI and the University of Wisconsin system have allowed this equivalency since 2010. On a vote of 5-0, the teaching and learning committee approved the food science course taught in the Family Consumer Science Department to earn science equivalency as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Baumgart, discussion? All right, Sue, why don't we go right to roll call vote on it?
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue. Pat?
Thank you. The information items are as follows. We received a report on CECS Focus. CECS stands for Social Emotional Engagement, Knowledge and Skills. Social emotional learning is necessary for an individual to cope with the demands of everyday life, managing stress, interacting with peers, and identifying and reflecting on strategies to manage future challenges. At our meeting last week, Patty Hubble provided us with an update of the program by reviewing year one, which is the 2015-16 school year, and the current status of year two, 2016-17. The next information item we had was a Student Services Professional Development update. Jason Gayhan provided an update on the Special Education Best Practices Series of Professional Development, which was launched in September of 2015 and continues to grow. This year, there are four offerings for our paraprofessionals in addition to the current offerings for our teachers. The third information, information item was a health course in the Health Academy. At last week's meeting, Amy Lang informed the Teaching and Learning Committee members that the Governance Board of the Waukesha Academy of Health Professions approved the change to cover the curriculum in the current freshman health course within multiple courses in the Health Academy. Therefore, starting next school year, Health Academy students will not have to take the health class, but rather earn the credit throughout their academy experience. Did anyone understand that? That was a, a mouthful.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right. The, our one discussion item was student achievement update from South, from the Avid program at South. Dan Kaiser and District Avid Coordinator Amanda Wagner, along with 10 current and former South High School Avid students, joined the Teaching and Learning Committee to highlight the Avid program. Data from the seven years of Avid's existence at Waukesha South was shared, along with student stories of success and gratitude for the program. Avid will be expanding its reach into North High School next school year. I believe that Bill has something to add.
Well, Mr. Baumgart? Yeah, I, and some of it was directly related. In fact, one of the things that I was amazed at, that they shared with us last week, it was also in your packet, it was the, some of the, some of the statistics. Now, that should be easier to say than that, some of the statistics, which, you know, we knew that program was working over there, but when you see that 93% of the seniors graduating last year completed college entrance requirements, took at least one course of rigor, and 78%. Great, great response from kids that, when they were freshmen, weren't even thinking about this.
Right.
Going on from there, the statistics about how many of them actually finish college compared to the general population is awesome. Then on, was it yesterday or the day before? Lose track of things, right? Anyway, I had a, I was being bothered internally about the fact that I have all those pennants up in the room there, and not a one from Marquette University, which just drove me nuts. So, I went down and got some pennants for the school. So, when I was there, there was a young man from, an Avid graduate from the year 2013, who went to WCTC in the IT program, and he was giving a speech to the kids, and it was just so interesting. If, I'm sure that if he'd seen this kid four or five years ago, he'd say, what do we listen to him for? He really had it act, his act together, and spoke so much, so fluently about what the program did for him in terms of opening him up.
Right.
In terms of him talking to people. And if you think about an IT kid talking about, you know, Paul mentioned this earlier, the soft skills, communicating with other people, working with teams and stuff like that, getting your job done, you wouldn't think of an IT person selling the pitch, but he did a beautiful job of selling that pitch. I have nothing against IT people. I got them in my family. But this, this, this young man had these kids understanding what, what it means to have those skills, what it means. He also brought to their attention the, the concept of, consider a two-year school as well as a four-year school, consider a two-year school and then a four-year school. He had the whole thing planned out, how to get scholarships, and the kids are just really engaged. I mean, they asked him questions afterwards. So, another, another example, I think Ryan Galanti shared with me, often we hear from the, the kids that just graduated last year, which is what we had at, at the meeting the other night. They're one years, one year away. This kid's four years, I think four years away from graduation from Avid, and he is coming back and telling his story, and, and he's being, I've been told, he's been very successful at the company he works for, so. I just wanted to add that, because, you know, sometimes, I've never brought up Avid at one of our reports, but I.
It could have been part of your report, because it's a program, but.
No, I know, but I saw it on the agenda here, too.
Yeah.
And I wasn't, you know, I didn't want to hurt Barbara's feelings. So, great program. Just, it continues to just knock my socks off.
And just for our, for our audience, to let our audience know, Avid targets kind of that average student that may or may not have an example of someone in their family who has gone on to higher education, and it really gets them thinking about increasing the rigor and really putting forth effort and learning the skills that are necessary to go on to really learn more. And what I see with those students, and, and I haven't been there for a few years, but I, I had visited on a fairly regular basis, you start to see these students pick up on a love for learning, and that's pretty cool to see that fire get lit within them, and, and that's really what Avid does, and we're looking to expand it to North this year, which I think is, is, is really.
September.
Yeah, is, or next year is really good, yeah.
We're also looking at bringing some of those concepts down to the middle school, so those discussions are underway as well.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Quick comment on what Bill was saying. When the Avid kids stay in, or when students stay in, it's called the persistence rate, and I think that it's extremely high with the Avid, and I think what Avid does is it teaches kids not how to get into college, but how to finish college, and I think that is probably one of the most important things that you do for college readiness. We, we see a lot of statistics about our students that get into college, but we see very little about how much of them complete college, and that's really the ultimate goal of getting into college, is completing it. Not completing it causes a lot of hardship for those students, so I think that the Avid program goes a long way in helping our students complete college and not just get in.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, I, you know, and, you know, I wanna, normally, we don't say much, but there was tonight's speaker of the board mention about traits that you want to try and instill in people, and I, and I think the comment made about moving this down to the middle school is good. Really, that was the start of, you know, the other students, and Harvey Phillips, was making sure that we gave every kid, every child an opportunity to be successful in our school district, based on their individual learning styles, and, but yet, making sure they learn how to show up to work every day, how to do those skills that are important to their employer. That's always been an emphasis with our alternative school. So, these types of programs have been ongoing in Waukesha for 20 years. I mean, this is maybe a more advanced version of it, obviously, in terms of it, but our commitment to, to the success of children in our community is, I think, unmatched in Waukesha County. We look at all levels of, no child left behind is something we've been practicing well before it became a catchphrase at the federal level, and Avid is one of those programs amongst many that Waukesha should be proud of. And then the other part is that we're also well-recognized over the years for being one of leaders in dealing with special needs children. I mean, obviously, we're not perfect, but we're better than most, and, and we want to be perfect if we can, so.
Any other comments or discussion on Avid? Mr. McCaffrey?
Nope. That concludes my Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, February 7th, 2017.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the Human Resource Committee, given by Pat Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one action item tonight. It's approval of the superintendent contract. The Board of Education discussed a superintendent's contract in closed session last month. The decision was to offer a two-year contract. Mr. President, I move to approve the superintendent's contract.
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
You know, it's not that we haven't discussed this. We have. There's been a lot of detailed effort into it, to make sure it's appropriate for the school district of Waukesha, and reflects the type of people we want to attract to the superintendent position, both now and in the future, so.
And he deserves it.
He does deserve it, yes.
He deserves everything he gets.
You know, when we, when we first hired.
It could go another way, too.
Todd continues to move this district forward with his vision, with his selection of his leadership team, with his ideas. He continues to move education forward in, in this school district, and, you know, I recall when we first hired John Todd, you were brought here for your financial skills. That was the primary reason, and you surpassed that. You are a well-rounded leader in all areas of education, and I think this two, two-year additional contract would show that you've deserved that, if we choose to pass that. I don't know what the vote's gonna be.
Let's guess.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just to recap, from the financial point of view, since Mr. Gray's come here, the finances of this district have continued to improve year in and year out. We talked about OPEB. He carried that ball for us for eight long years. We started with dealing with healthcare and being able to bid that out, which gave us a two-year jump on everybody else in the state in terms of getting the statistics we needed to go, to be self-insured. He embattled three years of burden trying to work through the salary schedule thing, and was a real warrior on that, along with HR department at the time, and, and then most recently, we just discussed the other night, the student transportation contract. Altogether, I'd say annually, those, those, those three items alone save this district about $10 million a year in composite, and, I mean, $10 million a year, every year, and that allowed us the flexibility of being one of the few districts that doesn't have financial problems in, in this area. We don't, we haven't been cutting programs. We've been managing our way through it, and we haven't had that much success previously with our superintendent financially, and yes, we still are working on the academic side, but it's nice being financially sound.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all the, all the nice comments, but as you know, it's all about my staff, so thank you for letting me hire really good people, and I try to stay out of their way. It doesn't always happen, but that's, that's where it's all about. It's, it's the folks behind us here that really, really do a lot day in and day out, and I think your flexibility in allowing me to hire good people has made all the difference in the world, and putting up with some of my crazy ideas, but that's, that's okay.
Excellent. Any other comments? Okay, Sue, let's take the roll call vote on a two-year contract for our superintendent.
Tricia Madden?
Absolutely.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 8-0.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. We look forward to the next two years with you, Todd. Thank you. Two and a half years. Moving on to our next committee report, the Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Madden.
We have no report for you tonight, Mr. President.
Okay. Moving on to Policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes. We have no action items, nor information items, one discussion item, and quite simply, that is preparing for, coming as a first reading for our February meeting. That is the approval of our Neola Policy Series 5,000 through 9,000. This series of Neola policies were reviewed by administration and the Policy Committee. Clarifications were provided by Richard Zimmern of Neola. Any questions or comments will be entertained by the Policy Committee at its January meeting, which is next Tuesday. I do encourage you to, if you've been paying attention to the policies, and you have any questions, please get those into us quickly, because it will be next Tuesday that we're going to be reviewing those. I appreciate Karen had sent a pretty good list of some of the things that we're, we're looking into right now, and, because if we don't, if we don't have that stuff by next week to discuss, it'll be very difficult to have our approval at the February meeting, excuse me, at the February meeting, which we have as a target, so that we can put them into effect for the next year. Remember always that these policies will be revised and reviewed constantly in the future. It's not like the, the last time we'll ever look at them, believe me. So, that's just, again, a sincere request for you to, if you have any questions, get those to Joe ASAP, so that we can, next Tuesday, as a, our committee meeting, review them, see if, see if we're ready to go, so we can bring them. First, Series 0 to 4, and this Series 5 to 9,000 are all going to be up for approval at the February board meeting, so that we can begin the process of putting them in place and using them. That concludes my report.
Ms. Reinacek?
Thank you. So, Bill, at the policy meeting, would you, are we welcome to sit at that table, or?
Sure, you can come to the meeting.
And then you're gonna be discussing those, or what does that look like?
Well, okay, what, the list you presented, for instance, Joe and Lynn, and I, everybody talked to Lynn about this afternoon a little bit, too, we're gonna go through those, and there'll be some answers for all of those, and anybody else that, I submitted a list about a month ago, similarly, and, and some of those are just wording things, and some of them are, that's the rule, that's the law, that's the compliance, and some of those maybe need a correction, so.
So.
We will be, you'll probably have your answers before then.
Okay. So, it's not like we should come on Tuesday and have a discussion. There won't be a discussion. We'll be able to observe the meeting, and you will discuss some of these. Okay, thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just a quick question, and I'm, I, my recollection, now, maybe I'm wrong, but normally, when board members come to committee meetings, they're invited to participate in the discussion, although they don't vote, they're free to participate relative, relative to the.
We wouldn't be shutting anybody off if you have a question.
Well, and normally, they're allowed to be kind of part of the discussion, but not a voting person, so.
That's correct.
It's a more free-wheeling, if you, if any member wants to go to any meeting at any time, whether it's finance, CNI, whatever, you're free to be part of the discussion.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good point. Good point. Okay. Thank you for your report, Mr. Baumgart. And that wraps up our committee reports. We do have, at this time, I'd be taking any recommendations for any future items on the board agenda, or our committee chairs could take recommendations for committee meetings. Does anybody have? Any suggestions?
No.
We heard, we heard them. We, we heard them from before, so.
I've been assured by the board president that he'll take, he'll, he'll, he'll consider the, the suggestion.
Consideration doesn't mean action, though, Mr. O'Brien, so, no.
Correct. Considered already.
Is there anything for any of our, our committee chairs, so? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for attending tonight. We appreciate you being here with us. We stand adjourned.